Good evening. Time being seven o'clock. I'll start the September 3rd meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Like to read this into the record. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Before we get started, it's with a great feeling of sorrow that I would ask for a moment of silence and prayer for Mr. Ralph J. Lapore. Ralph was a great man that served on the Oxford Planning Board for 20 years. In addition, he served besides the Planning Board, he was a member of the Municipal Building Study Committee, the School Building Needs Committee, and was an alternate to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. He died peacefully on August 22, 2020, surrounded by his family. And anyone that knows him, he was always good for a quick little joke to make you smile. So if you could just remember him for a moment, please. Thank you. All right, first item on our agenda is-
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, yes, John.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to express my condolences to the family as well. Personally, I've worked with Ralph over the years, and I had a lot of respect for the gentleman. He was quite debonair. He always came to a meeting with a suit and a tie, and I tried emulating him. If you recall, before we went to the video, I always wore a suit and a tie because I was impressed by the appearance of Ralph. Ralph was always a gentleman. He always expressed himself in a very professional manner, and he really enjoyed and loved this community. And Ralph was the type of individual that would help anybody. The town always came first with Ralph. And I just want to say that I think the family ought to be very proud of the many years that he has given, not only to the community, but to his family. I know he loved his family very dearly. And my heart goes out to the entire family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Very well said, John, very well. All right. So nothing else? We'll go to our first item on our agenda is a certificate appreciation for this retiring town clerk, somebody named Laurie Kelly. She knows I'm only kidding. So let me present this, Laurie. We'll read it on air today and formally present it to you tomorrow. How's that? But this is a certificate of recognition which is presented to Laurie Kelly. On the occasion of your retirement, the town of Oxford extends heartfelt thanks and appreciation for your dedication and outstanding service to our community for nearly 30 years. Most recently is the Oxford Town Clerk, which you served from May 18, 1994, and will serve till October 7, 2020. The Board of Selectmen joins with the citizens of Oxford to express our sincere gratitude. You have faithfully served our community by providing a plethora of essential services to Oxford's residents and employees for over one quarter of a century. We have been blessed by your commitment to the town of Oxford, and may you enjoy a healthy and fruitful retirement for many years to come. And this is signed by the entire board and the town manager, Jen Callahan. We thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know what else to say, you know. It's, you're gonna be hard, we've already, John and I have already kinda, and I'm sure he'll repeat it again, that you'll be very difficult to try to replace. You know, you're very smart, you've done a wonderful job. And of course, I know you personally, and I thank, thank you for just being such a wonderful, wonderful woman. And it's a great, great thing you've done for this great town of Oxford. So I personally thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Absolutely.
Yes, John, I figured you would.
I can't go without, without commenting on Laurie. I mean, Laurie has been so steadfast over the years in making sure that everything was the eyes were dotted and the tears crossed. I don't think we could ask for a better town clerk. She's done an outstanding job, and I know she's gonna be missed. And once you walk out of that door, Laurie, we're all gonna be saying, I wish Laurie was back. Because I don't think anybody can fill those shoes that you have filled over the years. I've had the pleasure of working with you over all these years that you've been involved. And I know that other town clerks in the area are gonna miss you as well because I know you've been a mentor to several of them in the area. And the people that I have spoken in different communities have always commented positively about you and about how you run your office. And I know that other towns wish that they could run their office. Happens well as you run, have run yours over the many, many years that you've served us. You're gonna be missed, Laurie. I know I'll miss you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So Laurie, first of all, congratulations. And I have to admit, five minutes does not necessarily seem like nearly enough time to thank you for everything that you've brought to this town over the last 25 years. I certainly haven't been involved with you as much as Chairman Lamarche or Selectman Sad, but I have always found you to be a phenomenal resource to go to and provide me accurate and ethical information. And I don't think it's very easy toeing that line sometimes. You know, you wanna give good answers, you wanna give the answer people wanna hear, but at the same time, you know, based upon the other roles that you took on, you know, the ethics person and so on and so forth, you really have no choice. You just, you have to just say it the way that it is. And I think that that is a tremendous skill. And the fact that there isn't a person in this town who doesn't, who didn't know or doesn't know that you always had the Oxverds back in mind. And that is just a phenomenal, phenomenal tribute and to just an amazing employee for all of these years. And, you know, just like John, just like Dennis, I mean, I'll miss you tremendously. There'll be a huge wealth of information that goes out the door, and I'm really sorry to see you go. But at the same time, you know, I, I hope you really enjoy, you know, the next chapter of your life. And thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. All right, well, again, thank you very much, Laurie. Don't relax too much. May he come over and bug you. All right. So thank you again. Next item on our agenda is a-
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna add one thing. I know we're gonna talk a little bit later, but to the broader community of Oxford, we are having a retirement reception in Laurie's honor tomorrow at the Senior Center from 11 to 1:00. We will be practicing COVID measures in order to have this event, but I know that there may be an awful lot of people who may wanna come by and, and give their personal best wishes. So I've encouraged them to, because it's not very frequent that we have three decades of service to any municipality. And Oxford is lucky to have that. So I just wanted to, to say we'll have some light refreshments, and we'll give the public an opportunity to swing by. And I know Laurie would love that, and so would see a lot of people after all of this pandemic stuff. So hopefully, we'll see some new faces that we haven't seen in a number of months, right, Laurie?
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Sure, that's a great point. Thank you, Jen, for adding that.
Mr. Chairman, could I take one minute, one or two minutes?
You can take an hour, I don't care.
Wow. Well, words like quarter of a decade, quarter of a century, and decade have really hit home just now. But I do wanna mention a couple things, because, you know, I don't tend to take all the credit. It takes a team to run my office, and we've always had a great team. People have retired or left for other purposes, and we've always had a really great team. And that's why the office is successful. Almost importantly, I think, after Tuesday's long day, it takes a village to run an election. And, you know, we have some election workers that have served for many years, one up to over 40 years, but plenty of them have served many years. In addition to them, we have some long-term constables. We have police officers who are, yesterday, Tuesday, sorry, put in a 17-hour day with us. Custodians, because we had to sanitize everything this time, and we don't have enough staff for that. So the school custodians joined us, which we really couldn't have done it without their help. So that's terribly important right now during this pandemic. Also, our sense of community goes beyond the town employees. If you don't know this, we have an arrangement with our post offices for mailing ballots, which we mailed 1,900 in the last couple weeks. And they deliver directly to our residents. They don't send them out to central processing, which ends up taking four days to come back into town. Likewise, they return from the residence the ballots directly to the office. You know, that saves an incredible amount of time. So our turnaround time for ballots is days, back and forth, days. So, you know, that's credit to both of our postmasters. This isn't new, we've done it for a long time. But we do have two fairly new postmasters that were very agreeable to doing this. And our center post office postmaster, he actually comes over at the end of the day with any ballots that come back to the post office from the trucks, and he brings them over at the end of his workday. You know, it's just been an amazing team effort. And I just also want to give honorable mention to two establishments in town that feed and fuel our workers for a 17-hour day. Oxford's Casual Dining and Carlos's Pizza, they give us fabulous deals. We could not, the group of us could not go out and eat for what they charge us for 36 people. So people like that make this a much easier job. And, you know, it's, it's really been great to know all of them. And they're just, they're incredible. Their contributions to this town are great. Thank you. And you're muted, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, very well said, Kelly. You always give credit to everybody. You're so wonderful like that, you know. But it takes somebody in the helm to make it all work. So, and that's what you've been so proficient at. So again, we all thank you very much and wish you all the best.
Thank you, and I hope to see you tomorrow.
You will, you will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to let you know that Selectman Troyano is having trouble with her audio, and she did want to try to extend best wishes. So we're gonna let her try to see if it comes through, I think, if you're so inclined to allow that. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Meg.
Can you guys hear me at all?
Yes.
Okay, good. I have really bad internet service where I am right now, and I can't figure out how to unmute my phone because that's how technologically inclined I am. But I had to say, Laurie, it breaks my heart that you are leaving. I mean, I echo what everybody else has said. This town is losing so much and losing you, and it's such a shame that you're going. You are going to be missed. And whoever comes in has some big shoes to fill because you're it. I mean, you, you're fantastic, you have a great staff behind you that has helped you get to be as great as you are as well. But just please know you are missed. And I'm so, I know I saw you earlier today. To tell you, I'm so incredibly sorry that I won't be there tomorrow, but please know that I will be with you in spirit. And I, I wish you all the best. And I hope when all this is over, we can still keep in touch, because-
Thank you, Meg. Cheryl, did you wanna say something? Were you, no? I, I thought you were talking when-
Nope, I'm good. I was just trying to make a motion that Selectman Troyano was trying to speak. So we're all good, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks again, Laurie. All right, next item on our agenda is an Eagle Scout, Christopher J. Elliott. Like to present Chris with a certificate appreciation presented to Christopher J. Elliott. We thank you for installing a kiosk below the Osprey Nest in Greenbrier Park as your Eagle Scout project for the purpose of providing interpretive signage about the Osprey. We are aware that you designed the kiosk, obtained all of the building materials, enlisted the help of fellow scouts to build and erect it. The kiosk was beautifully done. It has a large bulletin board that the town will use to display facts about the Osprey, the history of the Greenbrier Osprey, and information to access the live stream camera online. Thank you for choosing an Eagle Scout project that enhances Oxford Conservation Commission's efforts to observe and enjoy the beauty of nature. And this is given under the hands, under our hands this third day of September, 2020, signed by the entire board and our town manager. And is Chris here? Chris, are you able to join us? No? All right. I just wanna just slightly say that you enlisted the help of fellow scouts and a few other people. There's a couple people there I know that I don't think can be scouts, but they're great helpers to have, and they're great people. And I personally thank you. The kiosk looks really nice, very, very nice. It's a great addition. So that's bad, Christopher can't seem to join us. Any board members wanna say anything? All right, then, we thank you, Christopher. Good luck in the future, and that's quite an achievement to make Eagle Scout, quite an achievement. All right, next item on our agenda is the 58 Forest Street Access. I'm trying this for the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we're joined by our legal counsel to have us walk through what has become an important matter for us in the town, and it's been brought to our attention. As you may be aware, at the, your board meeting on August 4th, Attorney Eichmann was actually, you know, looking to see about gauging the board's interest in granting a license agreement for a temporary license agreement to be able to traverse over property that has been bequeathed to the town for conservation purposes. It appears that there have been some other evolutions that have occurred, and I'm gonna allow Attorney Mark Reisch to explain to the board what has transpired and to provide us with some options to discuss.
Thank you, Jen, through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mark, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. So we, we have been involved in this matter for a little while. I know that you had some discussion with Attorney Eichmann at your last meeting. As, as the town manager indicated, the property at 58 Forest Street, or the property that's owned by the town abutting that property, is conservation land of the, of the town. The property owner, the new owner of the property, bought the property knowing unfortunately that there was an access issue, and was hoping to obtain access via a route over the town's property. Apparently, that access has been used for quite some time. The concern that we have, and I think this is information that, that Attorney Eichmann had brought forward, as well as the ability of the town to grant this kind of access. Ordinarily, you know, towns can, by action of town meeting, authorize the issuance or the granting of an easement over property to allow access to attempt to address these issues. Unfortunately, the situation we're talking about here, as referenced by the town manager, is that the town holds this property, its property, for conservation purposes. And that kind of elevates the level of protection on that property. You've probably all heard of the so-called Article 97 amendment to the state constitution. That amendment to the constitution essentially seeks protection of open space and conservation land and imposes significant protections on property that has been dedicated, municipal property, state property, that has been dedicated for open space and conservation purposes. And what that, what that amendment to the constitution imposes is a very significant process for any reuse or change in use of conservation land. There's a specific policy that's been adopted on the state level and comes from the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General oversees and defends the protection granted under Article 97. And what is required in order to change a use of conservation property is that a vote be taken of the Conservation Commission of the town allowing for the disposition or repurposing of that property. Then the, the town would need to seek such a special legislation at the state level for that reuse of the property or repurposing the property. Such special legislation will be predicated upon a two-thirds vote of each house of the state legislature. But on top of that, under the, the policies and procedures of the state, there is a requirement that the town then provide compensatory property of equal conservation value that would essentially replace the lost conservation value of the property that's being repurposed. This compensatory property would need to be property of the town that was not otherwise restricted or limited in its use to not currently serve as conservation property. So creating new conservation land. You couldn't simply say, well, we have existing conservation land in a different location in the town, and we'll have that count against this. You have to, you would have to limit a new piece of property. There's also the, the requirement, I think that Attorney Eichmann may have mentioned to you, of seeking what's called a see-prey determination. This is an action that will be taken in court to allow the Attorney General, who oversees public trusts and the dedication of property for, for the public benefit as conservation property, is considered a public trust, that a see-prey petition would be, would likely be required through, it would likely go through the land court and would require the cooperation of the Attorney General. So there are many, many steps. And I know it's, it's kind of daunting when, when the town is dealing with conservation property to essentially convert that conservation property to another use. So unfortunately, here, we're not just talking about a simple situation where the town could offer an easement over its property to benefit this, this, this new property owner and allow for this access. But instead, we would, we would have an extensive and somewhat difficult process in order to have this property converted. That was the, the basis for offering the license as, as an option. Obviously, a license is not a permanent interest in real property, but would at least allow, by permission, access to the property in order, in order to, to address that concern while the property owner determined how to address this through other means. So, you know, in, in summary, the, the process is not as straightforward as simply going to town meeting and getting approval of, of an easement, but instead would be a vote of the Conservation Commission, a vote of town meeting, two-thirds vote of each house of the state legislature, approval through the, the state's environmental affairs office, as well as creation of dedicated compensatory land, which would be restricted to conservation purposes as well. So significant costs and significant burdens imposed upon the town. The flip side, of course, is that right now we have essentially unpermitted access over town property. So the town would have to determine whether, whether, or what action to take with respect to that access. Again, a license agreement would at least allow this by permission. It's, it, a license doesn't, again, doesn't constitute an interest in real property, would not be considered a change or a, a repurposing of the property, but would be a mechanism to at least by permission allow that, that, that use, again, while the property owner sought a permanent resolution. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mark. Question I have is that what is the town's liability if this individual is using its town land and gets injured or something happens on that? You know, getting from the street to his house. Where does this town stand in that regards?
Well, two things. Under a license agreement, the license agreement would include hold harmless and identification language. If we are going to allow use of town property for this, this type of purpose, we would, we would, I would recommend that the license agreement include appropriate language to protect the town with respect to liability. As the property sits right now, it's, it's likely, it would likely benefit from what's known as the recreational use statute, which limits town's liability if, if recreational use is made. You know, we, we would argue that this is, this is recreational property in the sense that it's conservation property, open for, for passive recreation use, walking access, access of that type. And that as long as the town is not willfully negligent, you know, as opposed to a lower standard negligence, there, there is, there is significant protection. So the, the town would actually have had to create a hazardous condition in order to be found negligent under the, or in order to be found liable under the recreational use statute. So we would, we would certainly seek to utilize the, the liability exemption found under the recreational use statute. There are also other, other limitations on liability that we would look to under the Massachusetts Torque Claims Act, given that this, this, this use of the property is not, is, is not being essentially furthered by the town itself. So there, there are some defenses that we would look to. But certainly, the license would, would specifically address any liability issue.
Okay. Board members, any other questions or comments, what we'd like to do?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John, yes.
If we allow this special license, if you will, how long would it be good for?
That's a, that's a very good question. A license is, is terminable based on the license itself. So it's, again, it's not a grant of an interest in real property. You can't record it at the Registry of Deeds. It's not essentially like an ownership of an interest. You don't get to claim rights under it. The licenses can be drafted one of two ways. They can be drafted with a very specific timeline. I know there was a discussion of a six-month license at the last meeting. A license can be open-ended, essentially saying the license is granted and shall remain in effect until terminated in accordance with the terms of the license. So it could essentially just be an ongoing license. But again, either party can terminate the license. Usually, there's a, a form of notice and a, and a time period for notice. But again, since it's not a grant of a, of a right, the town could always terminate it. But you could enter into essentially an open-ended license. That's not a grant of a, of an ownership interest in the property, but it does allow permissive use for the, for the period of the license.
My next question would be, you outlined all the hoops we would have to go through if we were gonna go through this in a different fashion, where everybody involved would have their say. How long would it take for this whole process to work out? And would it be worth it for the town to go through all these hoops? Would it be worth it for the individual who was involved to go through this? I could imagine there, there would be a lot of legal fees and time concerns- I could imagine there would be a lot of legal fees and time concerns involved here. Could you give us some indication of how long this would take?
Oh, thank you. Those are really good questions, and they come up a lot when we discuss these issues. Obviously, from the town's side, there will be a couple of issues. The town would have to get a plan to determine the extent of the property that's going to be surrendered. You'd have to be going through a process to determine the compensatory property that's available. Then we have to bring it through the Conservation Commission, get a vote of the Conservation Commission, bring it to town meeting. So the period of time until it gets to town meeting, whether the town has a special town meeting at which this matter would be considered or whether we put on the annual town meeting. So that's a timeline that's under the town's control. We usually, when we're involved, to be honest, usually these procedures are undertaken when there's a significant town interest. Very often, we have these situations come up where a town is expanding or constructing a school and needs to utilize property. The best property for the location includes wetlands or some other protected property that would then be included as part of a school property, and the town can dedicate other property to compensate for it. Or the town is constructing, say, a new DPW facility or some other town facility, so it has a specific benefit. Here, of course, the benefit is wholly private. So I guess I'm jumping forward to your second question before I even finish the first one. But as to the benefit to the town, quite frankly, from what I've heard here, there is no benefit, no specific benefit to the town. The town would be giving up this conservation land and dedicating other conservation land with no specific town benefit. It would be for a private interest. In terms of continuing on the timeline, you then have to, two things that would have to happen. You'd have to work with the Attorney General's office, file the see-prey petition to get a change in the usage of the property, since it's dedicated by a bequest. That creates the public trust, and a judge would have to essentially vacate that public trust. We've worked with the Attorney General's office, their public trust department. We actually are very well in touch with the attorneys in that department, or I should say, the attorney is really just one. It's a lengthy process. The state obviously is very busy. This is one individual in that department, given the circumstances that we find ourselves in right now. I anticipate that will be a slow process. The last time we dealt with this, it took, it may have been on to two years, possibly a little bit more. It was a very lengthy process. Then on top of that, you have the process of dealing with the Environmental Affairs Department on the state level to determine whether the compensatory property that you're suggesting for use would be acceptable to the state. Then you'd have to get the petition that hopefully be approved at town meeting in front of both houses of the legislature, get a two-thirds vote on that. And as your town manager could tell you, going through this state legislative process is not a quick or necessarily easy process, especially if there's any controversy. And in this case, again, you'd really want to be working with the folks on the state level at the Department of Environmental Affairs in order to get their buy-in. Because if they don't agree with it and they're not comfortable with it, you're likely not going to make it through the state process. So it's a lengthy process. It's not an easy process, and it's a costly process.
Thank you.
So, Mark, it sounds like it's a lot of work for the town, going to be an expense for the town. In the end, it could fail. That, you know, if the state doesn't want this to go through, then we've exerted all that time, all that money for nothing.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, to that end, we have some good contacts on the state level. We would certainly, if the town chose to move this forward, we would certainly work with the state and shepherd this through. The problem here, of course, like I said earlier, is usually we're sitting down with the state folks talking about a public benefit, a school, a municipal facility, something that the town really wants. In this case, you're talking about a private benefit. I certainly don't, I don't really see the benefit for the town in expending these funds. In terms of making it work, obviously, I can't say what would happen on the state level, but we certainly would put the best foot forward in terms of all the various departments we have to be working with. But at the end of the day, you don't have the kind of compelling interest such as a school, a municipal facility, a road project that benefits the public. Here, you're talking essentially about changing the purpose of conservation land to create a driveway, and, you know, that's a private interest. And in terms of the cost, ordinarily, in circumstances where a private property owner is trying to get a benefit, we would expect the private property owner to shoulder all the cost burdens and all the fees and expenses that would be imposed upon the town.
Chairman?
Yes, Sharon.
Go ahead, Sharon, first. Mark, just, I have a quick question. So if the homeowner purchased this property, they probably had to have obtained title insurance. And wouldn't, if the town weren't willing to foot the bill on this, wouldn't the title insurance company at some point have to ante up and try to resolve this issue for them in order to make the property saleable in the future?
My understanding is that this was a cash sale. So I don't know what protections were obtained by the property owner. I can't really answer this, other than we did have communication with the property owner's attorney early on and explained these circumstances. We spoke to, I think, the Realtor also was in touch with the town. There was a lot of discussion when, right before the property was purchased. And then the attorney at this point is no longer representing the property owner. And it's my understanding that the property owner did effectuate the purchase. You certainly would expect that in a title search, this kind of defecting title, as you would specifically know, that this type of a defecting title would immediately become known to any title examiner and would certainly raise issues for borrowing, for a mortgage on the property, and for obtaining title insurance. But the deal went through notwithstanding this known issue. And it's my understanding, again, I don't have specific knowledge of the deal other than that I'm informed that it was a cash sale and went through without those issues being an impediment.
I hear you. So, I mean, with cash, you don't need lender's title, but, I mean, you could certainly have purchased owner's title.
You could have.
Which, you know, which certainly would have, okay, interesting. Mr. Chairman, I think Selectman Triano is trying to chime in here with a question.
All right, we'll see if she can.
Can you hear me? I think I figured out my phone.
Yes, we can.
Okay. With all this, we're talking about how we can make this happen. What happens if we say no tonight? That we're not going to go forward, that we're not going to take away the conservation land? I mean, where does it go from there?
And another good question, and we did discuss that. You have a couple of options here. You know, the big option is plowing through this very difficult process. If you decide not to go through this, and it is a difficult and cumbersome process, it really is. Having gone through it a number of times, I know how difficult it can be. If you choose not to go through that, you have the license concept to fall back on. If you choose not to do that, you could essentially ignore it, and the property owner will be probably accessing just as they've done without specific permission. The town would have to consider whether it wants to take any action to cut off that access, to prevent that ongoing use, essentially take enforcement action to protect the town's interests in the conservation value of the property. At some point, it's also possible that the Attorney General could get involved because of the public trust and because of the Attorney General's role in protecting conservation value under Article 97. And the Attorney General could itself take enforcement action. But at the end of the day, if the town said, "We're just not going to do anything at all," then it would be almost a tacit approval of the ongoing circumstances. The property owner does not gain a right on that property. But the concern is that at some point, whether some property owner would claim some kind of prescriptive right in the property. And we probably would want to just make sure that that did not happen. But as it stands right now, given the circumstance of that property, I think it would be very difficult for the property owner to demonstrate that they have acquired prescriptive rights in the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, Chairman, can I have a quick follow-up question to Mark? So, Mark, and the reason why we're addressing this now is because originally, it was only granted a temporary exception, so to speak. And if we let this linger, then to your point, if I can just use my words and not legal words, if we allow this to, because we knew about it upfront, if we allow this to continue to go and we allow them, or the current owners, to use the driveway, so to speak, that's been there, by not doing anything about it, we're kind of just letting them, we're letting them use it even though we know they shouldn't be using it, and then eventually they could come back to us and say, "Hey, you've known about this forever, and you're letting us use it. Now you have a problem." Is that kind of where we're getting this issue at?
Well, the issue came to the town because of the sale of this property. And I know that, you know, there was the history of the property, and I believe there was the owner of this property and the abutting property at one time, either with a seance where there was a relationship between the two of them. And so there was allowing of the passage back and forth. And then, when this piece was sold off, it's my understanding that they discovered that the accessway wasn't on the neighbor's property, it was in fact on town property. So the town didn't know about this until this transaction came to light. The concern that you're talking about, to use the legalese, you know, prescriptive or adverse possession of the property, just getting rights in property. You know that if you expand your driveway onto your neighbor's property and your neighbor knows about it, you do it for 20 years, you're going to wind up having rights on your neighbor's property. I always, I warned, I warned my friends about that all the time. But it's very difficult to get the same prescriptive rights on town property. Think about situations, you know, people encroach onto swales or embankments that are held by the town or even into street rights of way and try to claim them. It's very difficult. The only times we've dealt with it is when towns have moved roads and by virtue of moving a road have created a landlocked situation. There are certain circumstances. But the ability to encroach upon conservation property and then claim it by adverse possession or prescriptive right is very, very difficult. And we could certainly look into mechanisms to just make sure that that doesn't happen. But I don't think that that's what triggered this, Selectman. I think what triggered it really was the specific transaction and suddenly an attorney and a Realtor calling us up. I think just called the town manager's office up and said, "Hey, we found this problem. What can we do to fix it?" And fortunately, as much as, I'm sure all of you are very sympathetic to the property owner, we're all sympathetic, there's times when it's not so easy to correct a situation. You know, you can't always make use of property that is really not properly allowed for because of the way that property is held.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to make sure that the board also considered the fact that even though that with the former attorney speaking with the board about the property, at that point in time, the property was not purchased. And this issue was brought to light to the Realtor and to any potential, you know, prospect, people looking to purchase the property. It should have been, you know, glaringly announced to them. I have no idea if that really occurred or not, regardless of whether it's a cash buy. My concern is the town made a good, upfaith effort to put a 60-day license in place to allow the current owners and the Realtors to try to come up with some kind of alternate pathway here. And we were very surprised when we wanted to talk about, this is going to be coming up again, to find out that the property had been quickly sold. And now, of course, we find that it was a cash sale, and it does set a precedent, however you look at it. It is a precedent, I think, the way that legal counsel has explained it, in the alternate way that most times the town is looking for public benefit, community benefit. So I would just make sure that as we consider this issue, we consider the ramifications, not so much from the perspective of the current owner who bought this, hopefully knowing from the Realtor and their attorney that this was a major problem. But because it's a major problem for them, it doesn't mean that we should expend an enormous amount of money, you know, to defend a decision that may not have been wise. And I just want people to consider that. This is not something the board did, not something that the town did. What we're finding is now we're being brought into a process and being asked to fix it because someone maybe did not have the proper information when they bought the property, or were not told that information by their legal counsel. But certainly, this board acted in good faith to grant 60 days for them to come up with some kind of alternate solution, to reach out to neighbors, to do all of that, and instead purchased the property and now wants the town to just basically accept that decision. So that's why we're here before you tonight. And I thought it was important to have legal counsel kind of explain that to you and the ramifications and potential precedent-setting for other properties that other people may want to encroach upon in the town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, to follow up on the town manager's comments. It is very much my understanding that the town, acting in the best interest of everyone, offered the 60-day license and that the property owner, the current owner, was aware of these circumstances. Clearly, the Realtor knew about it, and, you know, there's an obligation to disclose. And the attorney knew about it, who was representing the buyer. So all the parties were well aware of this. And my understanding is that the buyer went ahead with full knowledge of these circumstances and full knowledge after a discussion between their attorney and Attorney Eichmann of the ramifications, knowing that this was not an easy fix, knowing that this was not a circumstance that would be resolved. The initial call was, "Can we just buy this from the town?" And as you all know, even without my very lengthy discussion earlier, you know it's not so easy to buy property from the town. You know that. So that was expressed to the current owner of the property, the buyer at that time. They were well aware of it. It's my understanding that they rejected the concept of a 60-day license, which was something of an olive branch to try to give them the opportunity to try to work this through. So I echo the town manager's sentiment that this should not be considered some bad faith or lack of effort on the part of the town or the Board of Selectmen. There are circumstances where individuals buy property that really is not suited for the purpose. That's why you have title searches. That's why you have title insurance. That's why you get attorneys and Realtors involved. And sometimes, quite frankly, it doesn't work out because it's not meant to be. And in this case, it would be a significant undertaking for the town. And to the earlier questions of the Selectmen, what would be the benefit to the town? I think we've already discussed that issue. So now it's just a question of whether the town wants to go down a very difficult path to enable a property owner to utilize a driveway or, you know, allow the property owner to try to resolve that problem on their own.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, John.
A question regarding the access again. They worked quite extensively on the town to try to get access to that property. I'm wondering, have they worked just as hard with their neighbor to try to get access through the neighbor's property? I mean, why is this burden all on the town? Shouldn't they also be trying to work with the neighbor?
It's a good question. Obviously, I can't answer that one. My understanding is that there was some outreach to the neighbor, and the neighbor turned them down. But, you know, I think that's a good point, that, you know, it is falling upon the town. I just, my concern is I don't want the town manager and the Board of Selectmen to feel like they're taking the fall and that it's their fault. You know, the town, the town did not- You know, the town, the town did not do anything to create the situation. The property is, was bequeathed to the town specifically for conservation purposes. It was dedicated for that purpose. The mere fact that someone then utilized it mistakenly for a driveway does not mean that it is no longer conservation value property held by the town for that purpose. And I don't know what the, what the communication was between this property owner and any of their neighbors.
Mr. Chairman, in all good faith, I mean, the board has gone out of its way to try to work this out, like going ahead and giving them 60 days to try to work this out, even when the parties involved knew that this was a difficult situation and they didn't have access. So why are we wasting all this time on this? I mean, I don't see it as an issue for the town, I really don't. I think the town has solid ground here. We tried to accommodate them and under the circumstances, we can't. It's as simple as that. It isn't that we didn't try. We gave them 60 days to try to work this out and obviously, it couldn't be worked out. They obviously didn't try to work it out with the neighbor because we haven't heard anything about that. But I think our hands are tied here and I see no other alternative. It's my personal opinion that we should just leave it as is. I mean, it is an awful that they're in this situation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yep.
I'm, I was actually just gonna say exactly what John just said, so I'm glad that John said it as well. But I just, at this point, I mean, I'm not trying to be cold-hearted or, you know, I'm empathetic to the situation, but I really just, I can't wrap my head around why someone would purchase property fully knowing that they don't have access to it, knowing that there's only a temporary authorization to utilize the property accessed. I'm inclined to honestly make a motion that we just leave it as is and let them keep the temporary 60-day license and then not extend it beyond that because it doesn't seem as though it would be beneficial to the town to do that. And unfortunately, the property owner would need to seek other options.
Well, Megan, before we go with the, I have a couple of things I just want.
I think Mike had a question, Mr. Chairman. He was, Mike Daniels had a question, he was trying to get in.
Okay, Mike, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, just real quick, have we touched base with the Conservation Commission as to the impact of the access to that area? Is it, you know, we gave the 60-day license, but have we touched base with them to see if the access has a huge impact on the land there? If we should even keep going with that 60-day license and/or, you know, if they think it would be a good idea to try and go through that big process of handing it over? Like what's their input on this area?
If I, Mr. Chairman, no, the Conservation Commission hasn't weighed into it. If you look at the access road and you look at your maps, it's actually right against the watershed, right near it. So I would venture to say that even though it's not, it wasn't their decision to accept the original gift to the town for conservation recreation, I mean, that's what's written in the deed. So even if the Conservation Commission said, well, I don't, you know, want it to be conservation land anymore, we'd still have to go through this entire process that Mark is talking about. So even though, and I would venture to say that they would say it's important not to, you know, be disruptive to the watershed. But having said that, before getting in and asking their opinion, looking at, and I have gone and looked at the property too, to see where that, you know, traveling back and forth, it is very close, very close to the water. But I have not been in direct communication with them.
Okay. Other than that, I'm kind of in the same boat as John and Megan.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Well, my point that I was, to kind of Megan's motion is that I'm definitely not in favor of a license or going through all the hoops and loops to try to change this from conservation. But I do have a concern with allowing this person to still use this as access without the town stopping this because, you know, of the fact that if something occurs, you know, I'm really concerned, they don't have a license, we don't have an agreement, what's the town's liability? And then if this guy just keeps on using it, how, what are the townspeople, you know, that where is, as a board allowing, we knowingly are allowing a person to use town property to access their personal property? And I don't think that's right. So I'm of the opinion of saying, you know, well, we've given you time, you haven't done anything, now we're gonna take the next step and you're no longer allowed to access by that means. Maybe I'm real cold, but again, yeah, I think he should have done his, well, and it sounds like he knew this before he actually bought it, you know, that the lawyers knew it. And so, and that's as far as I'm concerned. So you want to make your motions or whatever, whatever the board wants to do, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, just for the edification of the board, at the last meeting, which was August 4th, that is when the 60-day license was granted, so it would run from the August 4th time period for that 60 days. You know, I think and the attorney, perhaps chime in here, that I think if you allow that to expire, that you would need either to renew it or to potentially do enforcement because otherwise, I think your, the problem you've enumerated is you do nothing and you have that liability or you actually, you know, prohibit the access of it. So I just want to be clear that when you say not to renew it, that there is another step there because that's going to be common issue at some point in time, will it not, Attorney Reich?
Yeah, I think, I think the town manager summed it up very well. What our, our concern is, do we allow kind of an unpermitted use or does the town take action to protect its interest in its property? It is, you know, conservation property of some conservation value. The Conservation Commission can take action for violations. The town itself can take action, essentially trespass and other considerations. So there are enforcement actions that the town could consider. That's something we could work with the town manager's office if the Board of Selectmen chooses not to grant continuing interest through a license to the property owner.
The chairman, question to town council?
Yes, John.
If the board so votes to let the 60 days run out and just do nothing, can we, after the 60 days, protect the town, post the property? For example, conservation property, no vehicular traffic beyond this point or whatever, just to protect us? Can we do that?
We, so we could certainly look into that and look into, again, enforcement measures. Obviously, it's the town's property and so we could take measures to protect the town's property, we could work with the town manager's office to address that.
No, I'm just looking at, because the chairman brought up a good point about liability.
Yep.
And are we protecting ourselves by properly posting?
So again, I mean, I think, again, we have to be sure that we're not, we're not preventing the uses that are allowed on the property, obviously, and posting doesn't do that. You know, putting, whether putting a fence around the whole thing, that might not be permissible. But there, but there are actions that could be taken and signage is always, is always a good thought. Again, to the chairman's point earlier, while there are defenses with respect to liability, there are defenses. You're either being defended by me or you're being defended by your insurance company. But, you know, is there a possibility that somebody could use that accessway, step out of their car, twist their ankle and suddenly claim that they were injured on town property? It's not a sidewalk, so it elevates from a lesser, you know, chapter 84 claims for sidewalks and it becomes a toward under chapter 258. And then there are issues there as well. And, you know, some of that would be handled by insurance, but I, you know, I, obviously sitting here, I or any other attorney could not guarantee you that you would not face claims in that regard. We have defenses, as I outlined earlier. So, you know, it's certainly something that I think, picking up on what the town manager said early and earlier and the comments from you as well as the chair, we should be discussing the next course of action. If this, if the board chooses not to proceed with any license, then the discussion would be with the town manager as to how to best protect the town's interests and protect the town against liability. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So Megan, we're back to you. I didn't get your motion, so could you repeat it or amend it or whatever?
Sure. So I would make a motion that we do not grant any extension beyond the 60 days and that once it expires, we would not renew it and we would enforce whatever we needed to enforce to prohibit the use of it going forward. That we wouldn't turn a blind eye to them using it, that we would stop the use of it for anything other than conservation purposes.
Second, the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more comment? Not seeing any, then I will call for a vote. Megan?
Yes.
Cheryl?
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain?
Thank you.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So that's three yeses, one abstention, and that's how we'll handle this matter. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Always nice to hear your thoughts on things. Amazing, amazing.
Always happy to be here for you and I'll be in touch with the town manager to follow up on this issue.
Very good, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, good night, folks.
All right. Next item on our agenda is disposal of surplus supplies and obsolete equipment. And this is gonna be with town manager again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the board. This morning, this evening, I just wanted to entertain the board's feelings with regards to potential revision of a former policy that the board had adopted back in 1999 about surplus equipment. One of the things that we're trying to do is be more streamlined and efficient in the Board of Selectmen and manager's office. And as you know, that sometimes when a policy was adopted many years ago, the state has changed its laws and obviously, chapter 30B has gone through many iterations and that has to do with both procurement and disposal of property that is owned by government entities. What I'm imposing for the board, if you look in your packets, you will see that towards the back part of this section, you'll see what the current surplus equipment policy is. Usually, when someone in a department wants to get rid of some kind of equipment or resource, they take pictures of it, they log it, they try to estimate the value of it. And eventually, what they do is it comes up through the town manager, who is the chief procurement officer, but then also goes to the Board of Selectmen. Back when this original policy was formed, if you look at the bottom part, it says the Board of Selectmen, after declaring something surplus, they're really supposed to actually take a vote on whether the equipment should be going to another department or authorize it to be sold at an auction. And if they don't think there's any residual value, that it will also be scrapped. Well, the chapter 30B has set different limits on how to actually deal with property in a way to help municipalities streamline. So tonight, I actually have before you an actual proposal. If you recall, we usually, with the second piece of the original policy, you'll see that the chief procurement officer back in 1999 was Dennis Power and that has now been handed over through the years to me. If a piece of property is estimated at a value of under 500 after it's declared by the Board of Selectmen, then I can figure out what to do using best practices. And what we're trying to do is modernize and catch up with the chapter 30B law, which says that if something is over $10,000 in value, absolutely, you know, there is a process through the state law on how we dispose of that and we adhere to that process. What I'm trying to do is kind of increase that threshold or the minimum to bring before the board because there's an awful lot of work that departments have to do and they're gonna still do that. They're going to actually log what the items are, they're going to estimate the value and we would use best practices to dispose of them. But instead of a $500 limit, we have no limit, I bring everything to you, including items if you look in the packet, that the school is actually looking to dispose of, that really almost have no value at all. But what I would like to try to do is put a threshold on it so that the board would still be entertaining, you know, items that of true value and we would then be directed through the board's actions to dispose of that property using best practices. And so if you look at the proposal that's before you, the procedure would be that any department head that would be seeking to dispose of surplus supplies or obsolete equipment would submit to the town manager. We would create that list of supplies and we'd estimate those values. The surplus supplies or obsolete equipment, if it was valued at over $10,000, we would abide by the state law. If the surplus supplies or obsolete equipment was valued at $2,000 or less, we would actually be looking to dispose of it in a manner deemed appropriate through best practices through the chief procurement officer. If the supplies were in the amount of 2,000 to 9,999, we'd be actually disposing of them using the sound of best practices, but it would be deemed surplus by the Board of Selectmen. And so basically, what we're trying to do in this policy is allow the board to continue doing its important vote, but for the items that actually are of real value. And we need to modify this because the board is not taking direct action based on the policy that was defined in 1999 to say that you, as a board, define or take a vote to figure out where to reallocate the equipment to another department or whether to sell it at an auction. So we're not doing that and I don't expect the board to know, should we be having an auction, should, which department should use this or that? So what we're trying to do is streamline this a little bit and I'm hoping that if we can replace what was the, you know, prior policy, this makes it a little bit more clear on the steps and hopefully, we'll get rid of some of what is very onerous for items that really don't amount to any value at all. And I hate to put people through that when we don't necessarily have to do that. And we'd be conforming with what the office for the inspector general and, you know, for best procurement practices is to use those, you know, standards in place to remove equipment, but equipment that truly is of value. So I'm trying to lessen bringing things to the board, but also make the board actually use the policy it has in place. So it's either we really go by the policy and the Board of Selectmen from 1999 starts doing the authorization for whether the equipment goes to another department or sold at an auction or we modernize it. I think it's time to modernize some of our policies that we might have found that the state has already moved in a different direction and we got to catch up with them. So I would entertain any kind of feedback, but I'm hoping that the board would adopt this this evening.
All right, board members.
Chairman? Yes, thank you so much. So it dismayed me a little bit that we have a policy that we haven't been really fulfilling 100% and I appreciate the town manager bringing that to us. That's, you know, certainly something that we should be following. However, I'm not in agreement at the moment that we should be changing a policy.
However, I'm not in agreement at the moment that, uh, we should be changing a policy on this. I do know that the policy that we have in place is, is onerous. Uh, but I also think it's helpful to the board to kind of understand, especially when it comes to capital items and requests that are coming in through the department heads and so forth. I think it is important that the board understand what, you know, what we, what we do need to declare a surplus, what's not being used. Um, and I think I would feel more comfortable before changing this policy that we go back and use the policy that we should have been using all along. Um, that's my take on it. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else?
Yeah, question?
Yes, John.
The ten thousand dollar figure. I mean, if something is ten thousand dollars, why is it coming before the Board of Selectmen? I don't want to get rid of anything that's worth that kind of money. I'm sure we can find somebody that can use it.
I, I didn't say it wouldn't be, um, being brought before the board. I'm saying that there are state, um, guidelines on how to dispose of equipment that is valued at ten thousand dollars or more. They give the local purview, which means that, you know, you have to follow their guidelines, um, to dispose of that. And it doesn't mean that the board wouldn't be aware of that. I want you to think that I'm, I'm suggesting that the board is not gonna be aware of something. The, the state is very clear about the disposition of surplus property of real value and this board would absolutely have to know that and, and make that recommend, and follow state, state law on how to dispose of that. We would do that, John.
You know, I really don't recall any real issue with the policy per se. I mean, unless you can point something out, Jen, that, um, missing. Usually when you bring something like this before us, we look at it, it's, it's well outlined by the departments. And I'd say a hundred percent of the time, the board says, yeah, go ahead. We look at it and say, go ahead.
Right. And I'm and I think what we're trying to do, especially with the school, it, it requires an inordinate amount of effort to do it for, for items that are not of any real value. And so what I'm trying to do is allow departments not to have to go through all of those steps. Um, and also to make the board aware that, you know, based on that policy, um, that, that was written in nineteen ninety-nine, which, you know, looking at it now and finding it, um, I see that, you know, the disposition of reallocating it to another department or authorizing it to be sold at an auction if there's no residual value. That, declaring it surplus is one thing and then actually doing the rest of it is another. And even the preparation for that. So I'm just looking at the low value items to try to streamline it. I'm not looking to, to, and, and also to correct that one piece. Um, I don't want the board to not be making those decisions if that's what they really want to continue to do, um, since nineteen ninety-nine, you know? So, and that's, you know, I, I would have to then make the recommendations, I guess, for the board. Or the board would have to say, do I want to sell this at an auction? And, you know, for low value stuff, I don't want to do that. For other things, absolutely, I would be making the recommendation if we had, you know, equipment that should be, um, auctioned off or that this is what we're gonna do, I would be bringing that to the board. But we haven't really been doing that. So I'm just trying to modernize it. Uh, we have a very large volume of, um, policies that, uh, because this is a policy advisory board, that I want to make sure that while I'm here, I'm not just going by, um, whatever was put there before and, and trying to, to bring it up to, um, current standards. And, and most boards will make revisions to policy. So if you would like to, to take a, a stab at, um, you know, doing that with this policy, I don't have a problem. I'm just, you know, bringing, you know, uh, the modernization of, um, individual ones. Um, in my manager's report, I was going to ask, um, you know, through the chairman to the board if, um, a group of you or two, um, or would like to, or the whole board would like to work on a workshop to look at the policies. Cause I want to make sure that, um, you know, they're not just sitting on a shelf, uh, and if they don't have any value anymore, um, whether it's something that was formulated years ago and we've up, updated things like sexual harassment policies. Some of that is so outdated, um, that I would want the board to have something more current. That's all. And so this was one item that has to do with how the departments have to produce the information. And all I was trying to do is for things that are very low, um, you know, itemed, uh, costs, you know, try to streamline that.
Yep.
Then looking at the policy clearly from nineteen ninety-nine, I also saw that the board was actually supposed to be voting on whether to reallocate it to another department or authorize it to be sold at an auction. And so, I mean, if we can remove some of those pieces and, and keep some of the others, I don't have a problem. This was just a proposal. Um, and if, and if we, um, if the board wants to, to, to look at it and start writing that part of it, I, you know, and drafting, uh, you know, amendments to it, that would be great. So you don't have to make a decision about this tonight. I, uh, you know, said if you wanted to adopt it, that would be fine, but
No, I, I think it's a good idea that we look at some of our policies and if there are policies that are affecting the way we do business, then, you know, we should change them. We should update them. Uh, my suggestion would be that, um, and I throw this out to the board, that maybe we, we look at our policy, uh, book and maybe, uh, weekly, uh, at, at our meetings, pick one or two policies for discussion purposes to try to see whether or not these policies should stay in effect the way they are or should they be updated? And we can have that discussion amongst ourselves as to what we feel, uh, these policies are all about and whether or not we want to change them. I think that should be a decision of the board. I mean, it's, we're the policymakers of the community. Um, you know, and, and I appreciate the manager making recommendations because I'm sure that there are some policy changes in there that she may suggest that we will go along with. And that's, that's her job to make recommendations. But to actually change any policy is a decision of the board, just the Board of Selectmen's policy. So I think this is worth discussing, but I think we ought to pick these policies as we go. And you're right. I mean, if there are policies that go back to the nineteen nineties or eighties that we're not using them, bring them before the, the board, the chairman should bring them before the board, pick one or two and we'll work on them as, as we go along. Update them. There's nothing wrong with updating policies. I'm all in favor of that. And I think there's some policies in, in there that, uh, are in there that, you know, kind of hamstring us too, that tie our hands. Uh, and I would like to see some of those changes made. But that shouldn't be a decision for me or any in, individual selecting. It should be a discussion of the board to make those changes. And so there should be an agenda item at a meeting where we pick a policy and discuss it for, for a vote in the future. That's my suggestion. A board can do whatever it wants.
And that's
Just throw that out there.
Yep, that's a good point, John. Um, and to your point, this is an agenda item that we are discussing. Personally, I've always, uh, I'm an educator, as many of you know, and, uh, I've always found the process we go through in this town is kind of shake my head. Um, because when you have a, uh, a broken desk or a chair or something like that and before you can throw it out, they have to itemize it and identify it, take a picture of it, send it to us. We have to I, I think of my years of when I was, uh, in teaching and I was teaching computers and we'd have broken printers, cause in my field, that's what we did. We fixed the equipment and stuff. And we'd have a broken printer or something. We'd have two, three come in from various departments. We'd try to fix them. You can't fix, uh, no good, they're obsolete. Well, if we had to wait around, we wouldn't have enough storage area to get rid of the thing. We used to just, you know, go to our department head and say, hey, we've looked at this, this is junk. And, you know, and next thing you know, it was in the dumpster, you know? Um, and, and here in this town, we can't do that. So I, I think that's what they're trying to say is, is, uh, can we, you know, reduce us a little bit? So every item doesn't have to come before the board. And I'm, again
I, I can, I can appreciate your, your feeling on that and I agree. I agree with that. So, I mean, if the board has further discussion on it, fine. If not, we can take it up later on. I don't know. But I, I just feel that, um, you know, it should be changed. There's no question about it. I mean, this small stuff, why are we messing with it?
Right.
You know?
I agree, you know? I think two thousand personally seems like a high number. To me, more a thousand might be better for nowadays. Um, that's my general opinion. The rest of it, I, you know, s- seemed pretty good, so, but I don't know. Again, it's the board discussion. Cheryl likes to go back to just enforcing the old, uh, the nineteen ninety-nine is what she stated. How about the rest of the board? Do we have any other opinions?
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead there, Megan, I think.
Yes, it's Megan. Um, I definitely in agreement that a lot of our policies are outdated and we should probably be working on them. Um, John, are you saying that you don't feel like we should vote on this tonight? You want more time to work on it? Or, I mean, I definitely think this policy needs some adaptation. I'm not a hundred percent positive that I agree with every part of it. Um, but I am certainly open to working to change this particular policy.
That's my
Is that kind of where you're coming from too?
Yes, it is. I mean, I have no problem. I think the manager's suggestion on streamlining the policy, it makes some sense here. It really does. But I think it warrants further discussion. You know, like, why do we have to tie it in with, with this, with the state's figures? Why can't we create our own figures? You know what I mean? I mean, what, why are we tying this in with the state? I, I don't understand.
Okay, so
So, Mr. Chair, is this something that we could revisit?
In-house.
Wait a minute, what, John?
No, I just thought maybe we could streamline it in-house, set up our own guidelines.
Okay. All right, Megan, what were you saying?
I was thinking that maybe we could work towards changing it, not necessarily adopt this, but revisit it once we've been able to perhaps meet in a workshop or something to kind of hash out the figures that we want to use for it.
Sounds good to me. You know, if you want to set up, you know, a couple of years to get together, maybe with town manager or something, uh, you know, and go over some of these various policies and then present it to the board, that, that's a great idea as far as I'm concerned. It's a matter of who would want to volunteer to do that?
I would.
So we have Megan. Anyone else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a quick question.
No, Cheryl.
Uh, thanks. So, um, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear so I know what we're, we're talking about. And I've got to tell you, it is so much easier to meet in person than the Zoom call. Um, so I like the idea of, I like what John was saying about how we take a couple of policies. Maybe we, we, um, you know, we, we address them. You know, maybe the town manager can give us some input on, you know, some of the ones that she's finding, that she's running into some obstacles on. Um, you know, maybe we can tackle those, those first. I mean, I like the idea of bringing it to the board and having open discussion. And, and the reason why I'm, I'm more comfortable with an open discussion is because, you know, as we all know, you know, policies and procedures are, you know, pri- are set by the board. And that's, you know, one of, if not our biggest, you know, responsibilities to the town. So I like the idea of that it's open and that we can discuss it and we can have dialogue about it. So I, I do support that, but I think in my, but are you saying, Dennis, that you'd prefer to just have a couple of people on a board and then review the policies and then bring them to the board for discussion? Am I following that right?
That is correct, Cheryl. Cause I'm looking at, you know, I've, I've been involved in a lot of things like this and you get into terminology and the way it's exactly, you know, to do that in a discussion as a board like this and then get all this terminology could be quite time consuming. Where if a couple of the board members met with maybe town manager or whatever, discussed it, worded something out, then came back to the board and said, okay, hey, what do you think? Then the board as a whole, you know, publicly could hash it through, but at least we'd have some wordage. Um, you know, something, otherwise you get into, well, should it be a da, should be it, in, on, you know, that type of thing, so.
I hear you. I, thank you, thank you for that, um, that clarification. Okay.
But I, I don't think words like that really matter. I think the concept, what the board wants as a policy, before we adopt it, we could have, have it reviewed by council. If you feel that there is some illegality that may be caused because an I hasn't been dotted or a T crossed or we used the wrong word, it, it instead of they or, or what have you. But I mean, as far as developing a policy, that's the responsibility of the board. And, and I see no reason why one or two selectmen should be on a subcommittee to do this when it involves each and every one of us. If we pick one policy, a meeting to put on the agenda as a discussion item for a future vote, at least we're all involved and we come up with a draft and then we can have somebody look at it.
Right. I understand. I get it. I get it. Um, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to sit on that if, um, with Megan, with, uh, sorry, selectman Troyano, sorry. Um, I'd be happy to do that. I think that's a, it's a, it's a good idea. Now that I'm understanding it.
I mean, I, John, I agree. And I think we all agree it's a whole board discussion, but, uh, it'd be nice to have a direction. It, it's like we've got a direction right here, right now, and we're going round and round and, and we're not gonna decide on numbers and the way this says tonight, you know? So that's why I'm saying to present something like this, then the board could say, okay, well, no, I don't dis- I disagree with that or I think we should change that. We should have something to work from, other than an obsolete document.
Dennis, you make one hundred percent sense. I agree with you.
Oh.
Changed my attitude here. I agree with you.
All right, then, you know, since we have two members, um,
As long as it comes back to the board and we as a body have the opportunity to discuss it and to vote on it.
A hundred percent.
It's our policy.
Exactly, exactly. Yep, it's just something to streamline, to give us to work, you know? And you've got two selectmen quality people that can look at and, and give their point of views along with, uh, you know, a good manager. And then, you know, they can present it to us and say, hey, this is what we came up with. What do you think?
I agree with you.
So real quick with that train of thought, granted, it wasn't run by members of the select board. We have a policy sitting in front of us tonight that was prepared for us to be revisited. What, what can we do to tweak this the way that we like it so that we have an updated policy tonight?
Well, that's up to Cheryl and, and, uh, uh, two, uh,
Nice.
We're gonna review
I see the
How quickly we get thrown under the bus?
Well, I see the ten thousand dollars is on there because that's state law. Anything valued less than ten thousand dollars, um, that, that first opening part, um, let's see, it has to be desto- disposed of according to mass general law. But you, you said you don't like the two thousand. Maybe we asked one manager to switch that to a thousand dollars. Um, I mean, just coming up because I, I think it's kind of silly that we have a old wooden desk that was probably purchased in the eighties that's being presented to the board tonight. Like, we don't need to see that. It, it's garbage. Get rid of it. But whereas there's on that list, there's the leaf blower and the pressure washer that are two hundred dollars. That unknown if they're broken or anything like that. Let's get it over to the, to another department that needs that equipment. I think the town manager can handle that. She's quite capable. That doesn't necessarily need to be presented to us. So I think that's where the town manager was going. Um, the discussion that we've had the last fifteen minutes, we have a rewritten policy in front of us that we should probably work with, tweak the numbers maybe a little bit if we're not happy with it, and then adopt it.
Good point.
I move that we, I move that we take this under advisement to our next meeting. I move, I move that we take this under advisement to our next meeting.
I, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so that means we give it back to our two commodaries here to, uh, go over.
Meg, aren't you on vacation?
Not really.
I'm on vacation too, but. The wheels of justice move so slow.
Right.
There's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, yes.
And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative will bring this back to us. We have a meeting to be determined by, uh, two elite selectmen and town manager, how's that? Thank you.
Elite, wow. No, we were all elite ladies. Meg, we're going to need raises, um, okay, thank you.
Next item is, we're talking about chickens and eggs and ducks, all right, go ahead there, Jen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, as you know, the board had, had a discussion recently that was brought to light by a local resident who had interest in wanting to propose a warrant article or have the board think about doing that, to make some changes for, um, uh, egg-laying chickens and, um, ducks. Uh, the reason for that proposal, um, by the resident had to do with, um, the fact that this was a special permit process, and again, this is another thing that goes way back and had been, um, part of a procedure that just became, um, the way that the town handled, um, this issue. Uh, the resident noted that it can be quite cost prohibitive, uh, for someone, um, who wants to have chickens that lay eggs, um, to the tune of having to treat it like a special permit. Um, there are several issues with that, and I'm bringing it back before the board for a second look at this, um, to allow the board to maintain control over whether someone has, um, chickens or eggs that lay egg, uh, chicken or ducks that lay eggs, and maintain control over whether to grant that, but, um, to not necessarily treat it as a special permit, there are a couple issues, um, that I want to, and in your packets, I've outlined this for you. The issues related to a special permit process for, um, chickens and ducks, um, is the fact that, one, it's costly, it can cost almost three hundred dollars for someone to get a permit, a special permit, um, because it has to be advertised, uh, not has to, it has been advertised in the newspaper, there's been certified abutters that, um, have been notified. Um, and the problem here is that special permits traditionally run with the land, right? When you get a special permit somewhere in, in this town, it usually has to do with the land and granting, um, a special use of the land. Now, if you have a new owner that purchases the property, um, there is an administrative change, um, but there is, um, not necessarily a full vetting of, you know, the next person who owns the property, so if you grant a special permit for someone to have chickens and they sell the property, that special permit goes with the land, so the person who buys the new property would automatically have a special permit to have chickens, even though you didn't necessarily approve them for that. The other thing is that we've noticed that, you know, other special permits are, are handled differently. Um, there's a vast majority of special permits that are authorized in town, they don't renew annually, and, um, you know, even special permits for the planning board are not sent out by certified mail, and, um, the office, um, you know, winds up mailing, uh, to the abutters. So, I think we have a ability to have a compromise here, I know there's been a lot of, um, you know, effort on the part of some citizens to try to make adjustments, and so tonight, I wanted to make a couple of suggestions to the board um, about how, um, we might be able to, I think, address this, um, let the board maintain control and to do it not as a special permit, which it really, I don't think that's the intent that the board wants to have, but I'll let you weigh in on this, so tonight, um, you know, if we do this, uh, we would look to think about the board sponsoring a zoning bylaw to remove egg-laying chickens and ducks in the quantities of six and under from the special permit process, for the reasons I just told you above, is that the way we're treating it as a special permit, I don't think is necessarily, um, exactly what the board wants to do, and I don't think the board um, understands how costly that is to, to the average resident who wants to have a couple chickens. If the town meeting were to approve the adopted change, um, to a zoning bylaw, then the board of selectmen would set up a policy, once again, I want to empower this board, relative to licensing and permitting chickens, um, and ducks. Uh, and that would include the following, all right, you'd get input from the building inspector and animal control agent, you'd have a hearing before the board, no different than you've had before, you'd notice, notify the abutters, um, you would do one thing, um, differently, and that is you would not need to notify it in the newspaper, there is nothing written anywhere that says you have to, um, notify the newspaper to do licensing for chickens. Other towns, um, do a permit process, but it's not a special permit process, so that would save the average resident a lot of money, um, but it would allow the board to maintain, maintain control over issuing a license or a permit, we just won't call it a special permit. Um, the notice would be, you know, posted on the website and posted on the clerk board, we'd have applicants and abutters continue to have the opportunity to speak, we can notify those, just like we do for a dog hearing, dog hearing doesn't have to be posted in newspapers, I mean, that's a very costly thing, it averages like a hundred and seventy to over two hundred dollars, and then if you put the cost of the permit, um, you know, in the abutters list, the certified mail is very cost prohibitive for the average resident, so pretty soon to, to get this permit, without you perhaps knowing, it, you know, the average resident is spending a lot of money, um, and even, uh, renewing it every year where other, uh, special permits are not. So if we want a renewal, that's fine, um, but let's see if we can perhaps adjust some of these more onerous things, uh, for residents, so if the board of selectmen were to issue the parameters for the licensing and permitting of egg-laying chickens and ducks, whether you want to have a renewal or not, you'd have the ability to do that, and the animal control officer would still be conducting, you know, an annual inspection, so I think if we adopt a new policy going forward, if, if this were to pass as a zoning amendment that we're going to remove egg-laying chickens and ducks from the special permit process, and you guys come back to the drawing board and perhaps draft this policy on giving a license or a permit, you know, doing it the way that I outlined or the way that you'd like to do it, um, stay, stay with the, you know, hearing process, do all those things. But we have the potential to, I think, to compromise with, um, you know, improving this for the average resident and maintaining the control of the board. I'm open to any suggestions you have, I'm trying to find a compromise here, um, before, um, you know, a, as you know, we have received a petition for a warrant article, and I think this would go a long way, um, to addressing the issue, because it seems to me that it's centered around, um, you know, the, the costliness of the process, um, not so much that um, people don't recognize that it's important to have the board weigh in and have a, you know, the, um, public's ability to weigh in, but, um, I think if we, we adjust a couple things, I think we could strike a good compromise between the public and, um, the process, so I've just put this proposal before you and, um, you know, would love to hear from you guys.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may? I, I've looked at this and I, I can't agree more with the manager on this one. I mean, I've been opposed to this for a long, long time, I mean, chickens, a few chickens, we got to go and put it on your deed, and it's got to ride on that deed forever and ever, come on. The costliness and everything else that's involved here is just outrageous, I can see it for, you know, for large farm animals and stuff, but for a few chickens and a few ducks, I think this is a wonderful move, it's something that shouldn't have gone into the special permitting process to begin with. I was never in favor of that, so I'm totally in favor of this, to be honest with you.
All right, thank you, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Um, I wanted to say I wholeheartedly support this as well, um, I think that the process that we have right now is quite arduous and cumbersome, I think that we need to make it more cost-effective for the residents, um, I definitely think that in our policy, the board still needs to be able to approve it, animal control still needs to be involved to make sure that the chickens are going to be humanely kept and that there's enough room and that um, abutters should still be able to voice their concerns, however, I think that we should be able to keep costs down, I mean, I think we should be able to do a flat permit fee, what, what, license fee, whatever you want to call it, um, and then I think maybe like a ten or twenty dollar renewal, but I definitely think that this is one that needs to be revamped, and I think that it would be kind of an act of good faith of the board to move forward with this as well, because clearly it is an item that the public wants. Um, and I think that if we can do it through this means, um, it might be a little better off.
All right, thank you, Megan, anyone else? I know, I personally, uh, discussed this with the manager, and I was very much in favor, but the, the one thing that's always uh, been on my mind is to make sure that abutters are notified, that they have a chance to have a say if their neighbor is going to have chickens or ducks or whatever, um, and that's in this proposal still, so I don't see anything wrong with it personally, I would, um, at this point, um,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, sorry if you don't mind?
No, please, so.
So, I, I understand where all of this is coming from, you know, I respect the residents, I understand that there's a lot of residents out there who want to, you know, want us to amend this, I'm going to take a little bit of an opposite view on it, um, you know, I think the reason why it is, one of the reasons that it is cost prohibitive, or it is more costly, you know, why there are so many steps with it, is that I think that it kind of, um, you know, it, I think it weans out the people who really want and who really are committed to doing this and taking care of the chickens and taking care of the ducks and, and so on and so forth, and I fear that if we make it easier and significantly cheaper, you know, I think we then have, and I think we potentially run into an animal control problem. Now, I know I'm in the minority, you know, I yield to the board as, as far as this is concerned. Um, I do know that these things set on people's deeds years and years ago, you know, everyone could have chickens, everyone could have duck, everyone could have hens, I understand all that. But I think that the, the process wasn't placed so that we didn't have, um, you know, we didn't go down an entire street and every neighbor had hens and chickens and ducks and so forth, so I kind of see why we did, we had the policy as we are, I think that by reducing it, I think we run into the potential for more problems. Um, but I do respect the board and I know that I'm on the minority on this one, so, thank you very much.
Well, Cheryl, good point, but, um, I, I think the upfront cost, you know, the figure on a hundred and twenty dollars, just putting it in the newspaper, it's kind of, you know, and, and to that point, though, people have to be serious, because now with a, um, animal control officer, you know, you have to worry about disposal, their compost, their keeping the chickens in, enclosed, so that all has to go through animal control, so there's going to be a certain expense, I would think that you got to have a certain, um, Kelly's pretty good about the fencing being appropriate, the, uh, location of the compost, how far away. Um, so I, I think people have to be pretty serious to want to get involved in that, it's just not a matter of, hey, I want to have six chickens and I'm gonna, you know, apply for it and get it, um, you know, that's my opinion. Uh, again, it's, I like the abutters, because I, I just think that years ago, I lived next to a person that had pigeons, and I had no say in the fact that those things flying over my house and doing what they did, and, and that's always bothered me, so as a butter, I know my, my neighbor next door to me, he, he came before us for his chickens and I didn't care, because the location and everything was, you know, and to this day, I don't even know they're there, you know, so, um, so I think they have to be serious, that's just my opinion, um, you know, and that's kind of why I'm in favor of cutting it down, because, you know, the thought, you know, and again, putting it on a deed, which if you sell a house, well, the people that are buying the house may not want chickens, but it's on their deed, so it's kind of stupid to me in that regards, but good point, though, I, I agree with your point, um, in that regards, any other board members? So, uh, the, I would entertain a motion that we accept this proposal and, and go for a, uh, zoning bylaw change, uh, on the warrant? Is that kind of?
I would make that motion.
Oh, I would second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second, is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, John?
Um, question, um, since this is the zoning change, is there a requirement on the vote, is it a two-thirds, or is it a majority vote? You know that, Madam Manager? Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, you're muted.
You're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, um, I believe it would be, um, a two-thirds vote, um, because it would be a zoning bylaw, um, change, because it's not a general bylaw.
Yeah, I, I thought that.
At the town meeting, yep.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, there's, there's going to be some venting on this at town meetings, so.
And also the planning, because it's a zoning bylaw change, you know, it would also go before the planning board, and of course, you know, I would make sure to explain that we want to have a permit, you know, process, um, in a hearing process, but it doesn't have to be a special permit process. Uh, in, in, in the board of selectmen would be, you know, creating a policy on, on the, the permitting of chickens going forward. We have other permit processes that, um, are, are different from this, and we can, we can do that too, and, uh, and I would be making that argument or the proposal the same way to the planning board, so they'll weigh in as well before town meeting.
It would have to be a recommendation from them anyway.
Sure, yep. But to have the board of selectmen who's going to have to do this, to be part of that process, and I'm, and I'm happy, um, if we can all be on the same page with that.
All right, any other discussion? Then I will call for a vote, we'll start with Megan.
Yeah.
Uh, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, that's four in the affirmative, uh, one no, so I would believe that's two-thirds vote, we'll send it to the, uh, planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you, now we go to the town manager's report, you're on again, Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, the top of the report, uh, minutes for August eighteenth, um, all members were present, I'll be looking for you to, um, vote to approve them this evening.
Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I would make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, I have a motion and a second and a call for a vote.
Yeah.
Mister, Mister Chairman?
Yes, yes.
If I could?
Yeah.
Um, I was, I was reviewing the minutes, and we are, I think we're missing, there's a, there was a key part of the discussion in regards to the dangerous dog that we, um, that we were chatting about, um, the dangerous dog Leo, the, um, and I think it would be important for both parties that, that this be included, if I'm, if my memory is serving me correctly. Um, I believe that the owner or the homeowner of the dog had mentioned that they had um, fencing ready to be installed that was sitting on their front yard. And I, and actually, you know what, I think I just found it in here, I, it's not quite written that way, but it, it does give that impression, so I apologize for that, my apologies.
No problem.
It is in there.
It shows you, you can make a mistake once in a while.
Well, well, you know.
I'm only kidding, all right, so we'll go back to the vote, uh, all, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes, that's five in affirmative, they are approved, thank you.
I thank, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the next item is the mid-state massive ultra trail race, uh, before you, to this evening, the New England Race Events has submitted a request um, for, for being able to hold.
able to hold part of the mid-state massive ultra trail race in Oxford. The event would be taking place in October, from October 10th through the 11th. Specifics of the request, together with the route map and operations manual, are included in your packet. The request has been considered by our Board of Health Agent Tom Purcell, who has stated that he does not have an issue with the plan as proposed. It's almost a 30-page document that they put together. They have considered many items that relate to being very conscientious about the current preventative public health measures that they would want to enforce with this. And so tonight, the proposal is before you, as it would be in any other case, but with the weighing in of our Board of Health Agent, who has stated that he does not have an issue with the way it has been proposed. So I'd be looking for this evening of approval for them to go and proceed to do this. Again, this is an off-road thing on a trail.
And entertain a motion to approve this racing event.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, any comments? I call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. They are approved. Thank you.
And we also have, the next item is another event that's looking for the typical approval, and that's the 45th Annual Crop Walk. The Oxford Ecumenical Council and Oxford Food Shelf has submitted a request to hold their 45th Annual Crop Walk on Sunday, October 18. The walk will begin and conclude at the Oxford First Congregational Church, as it always does. The request and the route map are included in your packet. This request has also been considered by the Board of Health Agent Tom Purcell, who advised that one, the registration be conducted indoors, two, the self-certification by participants relative to the COVID-19 symptoms be done. There also be a certification by participants who, that they have not traveled to any other state that is not listed as a lower-risk state within the last or past 14 days prior to the event, that the participants would have a sign-in form in case there was ever a need to do contact tracing, and that all participants would wear facial coverings and each participant would maintain a social distance of six feet. If all of those were to be adhered to as part of condition for approval, then the Board of Health Agent would require that in his judgment. So we would be looking to do the normal approval for the 45th Annual Crop Walk on those designated dates.
Have an entertain a motion to approve the crop walk, subject to the fact that they adhere to the Board of Health recommendations.
I make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments?
Yes.
One quick comment. I know you meant to say, Town Manager, number one, the registration to be conducted outdoors. When you were going through it, you accidentally said indoors. So just, I want to set that straight. That registration would be outdoors.
I apologize for that.
Good ears.
Glasses.
All right. Any other comments? I'll call for a vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. They are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, I wanted to update the board on the dangerous dog hearing that had had Ruby, the dog, that the board had evaluated. On May 12, the board had made a decision and a letter was sent to the dog owners on May 14 about requiring the installation of a chain-link fence at 39 Charlton Street. At that meeting, the Board of Selectmen had then, after authorizing that, taken up another vote on July 8 to extend the fencing requirement to August 31. The property owners have informed us and also the Animal Control Officer that the chain-link fencing material was ordered. However, the materials are on back order because of the COVID pandemic, and they will not be available until September 8 to September 20. Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn has advised that the assistance has already been lined up to actually install the fence panels and that, you know, should there be any concern by the board, that she could certainly address that if there was concern that the dog was still posing as a risk without having the fence put up, that she would, you know, consider doing a kenneling of the dog. But she felt that there have not been any incidents and that she believes that the effort is very sincere. But it's up to the board on how they would like to proceed to allow the granting until this extension, until this material comes in.
Well, to the board, I talked to Kelly today in extent about this here in particular. And what she has stated, that the people have had a certain financial problem, but they have the fence on order. It's supposed to come in next week or two. She has all the people lined up to help them put the fence in. Kelly said she has no concern about physical harm at this point. And so she, she and I, when we were talking, would be in favor of us extending this a little bit longer. Personally, I'm in favor of giving them a little bit more time as Kelly seems very, feels very good about allowing that. So I don't know what the board would like to do, but that's, I just wanted to tell you what I, how our discussion went today. So I'll leave it up to the board. What do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, what's a reasonable time?
Well, I was thinking three weeks because they're talking, you know, the 20th. So and Kelly said she had it, you know, had the people all lined up. But Kelly was thinking it's probably going to come in within the next week, week and a half. That's what she thought, so.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's potentially all the way out to the 20th. We have a meeting on the 15th. Can we get another update on the 15th about this? It's tough right now. We're in the middle of a pandemic. You know, COVID's a real thing that's still going on. So I have some understanding. If we were in the middle of a pandemic, I think it would be appropriate to be a little more harder on people in regards to this. But if there's, if we know that the fence was ordered and it's just backordered right now because of the current state that we're in, then, you know, there's only so much we can do.
It's up to the board. You know, the other alternative would be for the animal control to take the dog into the kennel until such time as they get the fence up. So I see that as our options.
Mr. Chairman, I think it may be a financial hardship for the family to pay the kennel fee for any length of time. And I agree with Selectman Daniels, you know, due to the circumstances involved, I certainly would be willing to have some leniency here. And I'm not really in favor of having the dog at the kennel if we don't have to, for a number of reasons. But I think that if the board feels comfortable with three weeks, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Thank you, John. Well, do I have a motion? This is what we'd like to do.
I would make a motion to grant an extension for three weeks for the fencing to get put up for Ruby, with Ruby being allowed to stay at home.
I have a second?
Second.
And John makes a second. Any other comments? All right, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one abstention. We'll give them three more weeks. And I thank the board. I think that's a very good thing to do because the way Kelly made it, they were having a little financial difficulty and that's why a little delay on the fence. But she was pretty confident not to worry about it. They had things pretty well set up. So, thank you. Town Manager, okay, continue on.
Well, item number five is the, before you is an updated application from the restaurant or establishment, Half Baked and Fully Roasted. The board had been apprised of the fact that the original permit that they had issued had a different set of hours and the board had requested that the establishment actually provide an update for an amended application. And that is before you this evening. I do know that the proprietor happens to be with us and would be addressing why they amended the hours they, from just morning and afternoon to evening. And so I just wanted to go through the chair if, I think his name's Ralph there on the iPhone, that he'd have to, Ralph, you would have to hit star six if you would like to address the board about this extension of the hours and why you felt it was needed.
Yeah, well, we had a lot of requests from people, from people for us to do dinner. So we opened up Friday and Saturday nights from 4:30 to 8 o'clock. And if it continues to go well, we will be planning on extending it to possibly Thursday and Wednesday evening.
All right. So you went from serving breakfast to doing evenings also at the end of the week. Is that correct, Ralph?
Yes, sir. Just on Friday and Saturday right now.
Okay, so, so we'd be talking Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday would be just breakfast.
Correct.
Okay, great. I have no problems. Board members?
Yes. There's no lunch times? It's just breakfast? Is that it?
No, we're open daily from 5:00 AM to 2:00. Sundays, we close a little bit early at 12:30. But the rest of the time, it's, you know, we're pretty much not there unless I'm working on a catering event or something like that.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that if people wanted to go in for lunch, they could get a lunch.
Oh, of course they can.
Okay. It made it sound like it was just breakfast.
Well, no, we're breakfast, lunch catering. We're there seven days a week.
Okay.
But they're not serving from 2:00 to 4:00, John?
Right.
Okay. Good point. Sorry. All right. Any other comments? All right. Then entertain a motion to approve this change.
I make that motion.
I can.
We have a motion and a second. No more comment? Call for a vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative. You're approved. Thank you, Ralph, for coming forward this evening.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number six is to announce, announce to the board that the town has been notified by both Congressman McGovern's office and also the federal government that Oxford is now a recipient of a $200,000 federal assistance to firefight as grant. The grant will be used to replace all 38 departments' self-contained breathing apparatus equipment, which is over 15 years old. The Congressman McGovern was here on Wednesday, September 26, to make that formal grant announcement. And I want to personally thank both Chief McDonald and Deputy Chief Belanger for working with my office and advocating for this through our budgetary and capital program, which we had applied for this grant not once, but twice. And the Congressman has been an advocate on both those time periods. But this will save the town the money that it had just recently put forward in anticipation that if we did not get a grant, we were going to go ahead and actually do a lease to purchase. And that was the best way that we could actually try to replace all of these pieces of self-contained breathing apparatus. So this is a great announcement to make. And once again, it talks about a team effort. And I know Selectman Triano was there and she would like to talk about the visit that we had. Even before she speaks, I just want you to know you can go on YouTube. And our new media production coordinator did a fantastic job trying to capture an event that was held outside with a lot of traffic going by and a lot of noise, and it still came out good. So if you weren't able to attend, I encourage the public to take a look at how old that equipment is. So Selectman Triano, I know that the chairman has left the gavel on the table just now. So I guess you can pipe it up if you'd like to.
Sure. It was a very nice little ceremony. It was well-attended. And it was great to have him there, recognizing that the department does a great job despite the supplies that they have and the fact that he was advocating for Oxford to continue to get them the money that they need for the department was also encouraging to hear because we are a small department and we do a great job with what we have. And he wants to continue to help Oxford grow as well as the community. So it was very nice to be able to be a part of it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I know you-
What's, no, go ahead.
Okay, you've returned to the ro, since you've returned to the rostrum, I'll continue. Number seven is the Town Clerk Consultant agenda item. I wanted to inform the board with the retirement that we were recognizing this evening for our town clerk. The town is faced with recruiting for a new town clerk. The retired town clerk has left some big shoes to fill that we talked about. To actually obtain a town clerk that has professional experience is not an easy thing. I just wanted to let the board know that I thought it was going to be helpful to solicit the professional services of a highly, I'm going to say, a highly experienced town clerk, Don McCannowitz, who has been working with the department and our current clerk on not only gauging what the needs of the office will be going forward, but having recommendations for staff development and the assistance of potentially looking at helping us not only try to recruit a new town clerk, but as you know, we do have a residency requirement and that is going to be something that is already proving to be quite an issue, even though we have had the position advertised. Regardless of what happens going forward, I know this consultant is going to actually provide the board and myself with a report early next week and some recommendations that they would have. And I would look forward to sharing that with the board. But I do know that right now, you know, we are going to need to be making some decisions in the very near future because we cannot be without a designated clerk and we don't have any internal candidates. And the, and I will update the board on the actual application process and where we are, you know, in the very near future, starting next week and then going in before the next board meeting. The next item has to do with the fact that I wanted to announce, even though you had seen his face quite frequently before the pandemic, but we did do a hiring process and posted for the media production coordinator. And this evening, I wanted to announce that Timothy Labonte had been hired as Oxford's media production coordinator. And Tim will be responsible for PEG programming, as well as website updates and graphic design for various departments. Tim has a really truly significant history and experience in both television, multimedia, and filmmaking. And he's been twice nominated for Emmy and Associated Press Awards. And so I know he's been quiet and he's been behind a camera and it wasn't because he didn't come with a lot of experience, but I thought it was important to announce that to the town. Obviously, we've been going through a big transition with the way that we have handled our cable television, but I thought it was important to maximize the skill set that we were hoping to obtain. And so we have that. I don't know, Tim, if you would like to come on and say hi to the board, that would be great. And maybe talk a little bit about the plans that you anticipate for- for getting us back on track with our cable access and also our media production. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, I have, I have so much stuff around me, trying to figure out the audio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Now, um, this is my third week. I've been loving everyone. I've been really enjoying my time here so far. Um, I'm excited to grow Oxford Cable and to really help out with social media and just, just using modern techniques and just get, um, get the town moving forward and helping out.
Very good. Welcome, Tim. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would just start to encourage the, the town that our telestations are live again, you know, in terms of actually providing program. And we are going to work with, you know, actually providing a lot more information going forward. And I know that the board is eager to have that happen. I know as town manager, I'm eager to have that happen. And, and Tim has already been doing that, hitting the ground running, and being able to get us up and running, and also to evaluate what we're going to need for equipment for being able to reach our broader audiences. And so I want to give the board an opportunity to, to say hi to them. So thanks, Tim. Now you get to go back behind the camera.
That's good. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Next item is just to remind people in the broader public that October seventh is going to be our special town meeting. It will be occurring at seven PM at the Oxford High School, and the warrant for the special town meeting will be posted by September twenty-third. We will be taking up warrant articles and having the board obviously adopt the warrant prior to that at its next meeting. There has been a citizen petition that the Board of Selectmen is in receipt of, and that it has to do with the next upcoming special town meeting. And I have submitted that petition to the town clerk. Outdoor dining update. I just wanted to let you know that Board of Health Agent and our team of people who review outdoor dining with the town manager's office has approved the American Legion Post fifty-eight for an outdoor dining permit relative to the raised grass area located to the north side of the building. It would be actually being used more for events that have to do with fundraising purposes for their members. And it has met the approval of our, both our public safety and public health experts or inspectors, I should say. Days End Tavern is another establishment that has been approved recently for an outdoor dining permit with conditions. Obviously, is for table service only, no standing customers. This is between the buildings, right next to Days End Tavern. There would be dining as the primary purpose and not alcohol, and there would be no outdoor music or entertainment. Recently, a lot of these establishments have accounted, obviously, a large falloff of revenue, and they have worked through with the Board of Health Agent on trying to come up with menus, and both the Days End Tavern has done that, and so has the American Legion Post. But there are very specific conditions on which they can operate, and so they did need approval for being assigned an outdoor dining permit. Just to let the board know and the community that we have been continuing to go with our actual customer service window here at the town hall at the top of the ramp. We are just going to adjust the hours. We've had no complaints. Actually, a lot of people have been quite happy not to have to come into the building to do business, but we're changing from Mondays and Thursdays from ten to two to actually Tuesdays and Thursdays from ten to two. And Dee Green, who's worked with us in the town hall and had been in our treasure collector's office and our finance division, is working right now to staff that window and has the, been able to accommodate the vast majority of residential requests that come through that window. The next item is just to let the board know that you are in receipt of the OUI Last Drink report that has been issued by the Massachusetts Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, where they actually look at providing last drink notices for quarters one and two of 2020. This is just to inform the board and the town about establishments where defendants that have been convicted of operating under the influence. They actually say that they were served alcohol at a particular establishment before being arrested. The whistle stop was noted in January of 2020 and in the report, and so was the restaurant Happy Garden was noted in February 2020. Obviously, we would be looking for patents, and these were isolated incidents. And of course, it's based on the defendants claiming that they have been served alcohol. Just thought it was important for the board to be informed of that. The other thing is to let the board use its community outreach to inform the town that Mima has notified this board that due to the above-normal temperatures throughout July and early August, that we continue to be in a drought, and that people, residents, should continue to closely monitor their water usage and be mindful of fire risk because of that. And the next item has to do with Howard and Main, Selectman Sad. I know you asked me about that, and as you can see, that the work has been substantially completed at Howard and Main. There had been some small punch items, but the lighting in particular has actually been put on, and I've been driving down there, so I know it's been operational. We're going to ask residents to closely, you know, give us any indication of things that they feel need to be tweaked, but the short lengths of sidewalk would be needing to still be paved with some line striping, crosswalks, and stop bars. But for the most part, the signalization is up and running. Have you been down there, Selectman Sad?
Yes, it looks very well, and it, it's working fine, too. There's no long lines waiting to get out onto Route twelve anymore. So I'm, I'm sure that the residents are going to be very pleased that this has finally been completed. Thank you.
And, and from a public safety perspective, it, it's wonderful to have a light to pull out onto the main street.
Totally.
So thank you for asking for that update. The next item is to let everyone know that Carbuncle Playground, the new Carbuncle Playground installation has been completed by what I consider to be a great team in our DPW. This equipment was made possible through the Celia Smolensky-Mallett Tritable Trust and the efforts of our Recreation Department and DPW. We took a number of pictures here to show you that it's up at the elevated level. It has great access for parents and grandparents to bring children, and it has both a quadruple slide and also a whole set of swings. And the one thing that's really nice is when you go up top, as you can see in this picture, if you're a little child and you're up on top of that, you feel like you're on top of the world. You can see the entire Carbuncle Pond, and it's really very, very nice to have. Our intention is to provide some beautiful picnic tables in the near future or seating for people who are using it. And as you can see, it's gone through a couple different iterations, but the big thing is there's the great team that helped to put it together. And we did not have to bring in an architectural engineer to put it together, because these guys now have put together two full playgrounds in this season. So my hat goes off to them. They did great job. And when you see them, you know, take a drive by, I think.
Did they try out the slides and the swings, or is it their size?
I did not click that picture in, but Steve Esposito did show me, send me a picture today with two of the guys on the swings after they had. If they can hold all of us up, I think they'll be able to hold a couple kids and the parents up, so that's a good thing.
All right, good point.
So that part of, there's some bells there the kids can ring, there's, you know, and it's still ADA compliant with those wood chips that are engineered for that specifically. So it's very colorful, and it really lights up an area that we haven't, you know, had a lot of. So that's terrific. But you know, too, the social, the senior social center has issued the September 2020 newsletter, and I put in council chatter, there are several exciting events that are coming up. One is the Grab-A-GO Coffee Muffin and Bagel that is going to be taking place on Friday, September eighteenth, from nine to ten. We have been having great success with that, and the seniors are really happy to be able to just drive up and get a meal or breakfast. So instead of doing lunch this time, we're switching it up to breakfast. And of course, you know, some of this is being made possible by recent contribution, donation from Curaleaf for our nutritional assistance. There are also podiatry appointments that are being made for Tuesday, September twenty-second. I happen to be over at the senior center for a meeting today, and Laura LaBretton informed me that they are getting a whole slew of people who will want to come in for these appointments. And this is a, a new thing that we're doing, so this is the second time, and people are really taking advantage of that, so that's great. And the needle workers are finally being able to meet with COVID measures in place, and they are meeting on Tuesdays at eleven AM, and they're really happy to be able to do this. I also wanted to bring to your attention in that newsletter that our Chairman of the Council on Aging, as well as one of its members, have actually given very special thanks to both Laura LaBretton and Cindy Nagel for their perseverance through pandemic and all of the outreach that they have been doing, and the message of togetherness and service. So I, I thought that was really wonderful for them to do, and they're working very much together through the pandemic, and, and it shows, and people are, people are very appreciative of that, especially the Council on Aging. So I thank them for being such collaborative partners in being able to provide our seniors with appropriate resources. And item eighteen, we've already talked about in terms of addressing selectman policies, which is terrific, and that would conclude my manager's report for this evening.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jen. We'll go to the selectmen's request and start with Megan.
I have nothing.
Very good. Thank you. Now we'll go to Cheryl.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jen, I was just curious, I, I, I had read earlier that the, the town hall was changing its hours. What are your thoughts on going back to Monday through Friday? Any thoughts on that? Are we waiting? What's your thought, thinking on that?
Well, I, 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 I think what's been happening is people are used to a designated time, and we want to see how well it was being used, and I think we will broaden that with time. I think what I, I didn't want to have happen initially was quite slow, and I didn't want to have someone, you know, not just sitting there, because we have other work that can be done. But I didn't want, you know, someone not giving full attention to residents when they come to the window. I do anticipate, Selectman Moebank, that we will expand that. I would rather expand those hours than, than start to have to incur the cost for multiple cleanings during the course of a day while people are coming in and out of the building. And like I said, a lot of the residents are actually happy that they don't have to come into the building. So I think we're, we're fortunate with that. So my, my understanding is that we will expand to it. I just want to be able to do it in a way that if I'm staffing that, I have the resources. Remember, I did remove a lot of personnel because of the COVID concerns for our budget. And, you know, I'm, I've been taking and putting people in places or bringing people back in very measured ways without trying to go full tilt and doing it in areas that I know are absolutely essential. And obviously, town clerk's office is one of those, and that's why we've posted for some part-time election workers and, and election help and assistance in that office. And same thing with the community center. So we will go up on it. I just think that, especially when it comes to tax bill time, I anticipate we'll go up and, but I'll keep the board aware of when we do that and so that we can make that announcement. But I think people have been planning to come here, and a lot of people are doing stuff online, too. I mean, that's was one of the things that the pandemic really indicated to us is that people, when they were forced to have to use online, and we put a lot of stuff online for applications and the like where they used to have to come in, they're doing that. And if they can't do that, we, we, we have been adjusting and making, you know, put things in people's hands or mailing it out to them. And so there's a lot of work that gets done without people having to physically be there. And I think we've started a good trend like that, but I anticipate we'll expand those hours in the near future.
And that concierge window, Jen, that sits in the back, is that open, like, how, what, is that open like the normal nine to four that we used to be open? Or is it just still opened on those two days?
Just open on those two days, because, yeah. So, and I brought somebody who had been furloughed and, you know, had been also laid off. That I'm trying to bring people back. They may not be in the same position, but this is those things. And so I have them doing more than one thing, and so that we can perhaps adjust to the reductions that we've had, but without feeling as much pain as we could. But so, yes, it's open from ten to two, nine to five right now.
Got it. Got it. And just to switch gears a little bit, any word, how's the school, how are the schools doing? Any, have you heard from the superintendent, anything along those lines?
They're busy as all heck. You know, they're going through the stuff that we were going through here at the municipal side. They're doing now with the whole notion of bringing back the students. I will tell you that the, the superintendent had reached out to me because one of their concerns is, is even though they may be doing a hybrid model, initially fully remote, but then a hybrid model, that their concern is being able to make sure that the faculty or the teachers are going to be able to teach, especially if they have school-aged children at home who may not attend Oxford Public Schools, and everybody lives in Oxford, right? So they may be attending a school that's fully remote, and they have young school-aged children that would be home all day going to school, but without any oversight. And so we're trying to come up with a way to, to address that with being assisting the superintendent, maybe, and potentially providing some space, which there would be, you know, classroom monitor and students that are in a full-day remote that may be attending Oxford Public Schools, but their parents teach here in Oxford. Come up with a collaborative model to, to assist them. But I do know they're, they're having a lot of detailed plans that are put forward, and there's a lot of information that is flowing from the administration right now currently to all parents, the school committee, and the faculty, so they're very, very busy.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl. Mike?
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you. John?
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you all a very safe holiday weekend, and stay COVID-safe, please. And if you're traveling, be careful. See you next meeting. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And I have nothing, so I would obtain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Cheryl seconds it. All right, call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five and affirmative, we are adjourned. I thank you all, and have a wonderful weekend.